All right, good morning. I'd like to formally wish all a good morning in Harris Hall and welcome those joining us online. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Lane County Board of County Commissioners to order. It's Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Just went to a funeral this last week and thought about how our flag was folded. It's done 13 times, each having a specific meaning of honor, values, and tribute to those who served our nation. Today I'll highlight the first three as we wind up the month where Flag Day was celebrated. The first fold symbolizes life. The second fold symbolizes the belief in eternal life. And the third honors and pays tribute to the veterans who gave their lives for this country. So stay tuned for the other ones on a later meeting. So the top of the morning to you, Mr. Mokrisky, our county administrator. How are you, sir? I understand we have a little bit of a somber news announcement, and I'm giving you the floor, sir. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I was just informed this morning that former Commissioner Rob Handy died recently. He, Rob Handy, served as a Lane County Commissioner representing the North Eugene District from 2009 to 2013, just prior to when I came, so I didn't have the ability to serve with or to work with Mr. Handy. He died on May 19th of this year, as it's been reported, on the Pacific Ocean, surrounded by his family in a peaceful manner. And just wanted to share that with Commissioners and the public as this is an individual. Serving as a Lane County Commissioner is a very difficult thing to do. And so wanted to recognize former Commissioner Rob Handy for his years of service and dedication to the community.
Well, thank you for that. And we salute Mr. Handy for his services as county commissioner. Thank you very much. Mr. Mokrisky, is there any adjustments to our agenda?
No.
Any emergency business, sir?
No.
All right. Well, we have a nine o'clock certain item, our Public Hearing Order Resolution 25062401 on the matter of adopting a fiscal year 2425 supplemental budget number four, making and reducing and transferring appropriations. And I'm looking for Christine Mitty, but I'm, oh, she's online. So Ms. Mitty, if you'd please go ahead and introduce this item for a summary, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. So as noted, this is our fourth supplemental budget of the year, final, as we're in our last days of the fiscal year. Some things that I'll highlight for you in it is there is an inter-fund loan request that you will actually approve later in your agenda, but it has been recommended by the Finance and Audit Committee to you. It's related to the delay in reimbursements of federal funding. And so this is a safeguard for us to put a loan in place just in case it's needed. The hope is still that it would not be needed. Additionally, I'll point out that this supplemental actually decreases our budget by about $10.2 million, also decreases our FTE slightly by 1.4 FTE. So that will, additional things are reviewing our revenue for final year estimates if anything has changed, and then also rebudgeting projects, especially in the area of roads and bridges or facilities projects. When those won't be completed by the end of the year, they will decrease their appropriations in this year, and then you'll see adjustments in the adopted that you'll do later today to increase the expenses there. And that is my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We have a couple of things, items to cover here. Technical, this is a public hearing on the supplemental budget for the current fiscal year budget as allowed under ORS 294.471 and ORS 294.473. This public hearing is required under ORS 294.473 due to one or more funds amending expenditures by more than 10% from the budgeted amounts. Notice of this hearing and summary of the changes was published as detailed in the supplemental budget order and resolution included in this agenda item. Participants may testify for or against any item contained in the supplemental budget. So at this time, I'd like to formally open the public hearing for anyone wishing to testify on the supplemental budget changes. And I'm looking to our audience, seeing no one online. Do we have anyone, Jessica?
We do not.
All right. Great. Thank you. I'm going to close the public testimony period and add any additional comments from staff on this particular issue? That was a good time.
No additional comments. Thank you.
Good deal. And any comments or questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Farr.
Well, I think we all join in thanking the citizen members of the Budget Committee for the work that they do. Each one of us appoints one member, and it is hard, sometimes thankless, but always at the very end rewarding. And today is a reward for the hard work that the five citizen members put into the budget.
Great. Thank you. And anybody else? If I'm not, I'm looking for a motion.
Chair, I've got a motion. I move to approve the Order and Resolution 25062401 in the matter of adopting the fiscal year 2425 supplemental budget number four, making, reducing, transferring appropriations.
Great. Second, please. Thank you very much. It's been moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Abuck for a move in approval of the Order Resolution 25062401 in the matter of the 2425 supplemental budget number four, making and reduction in reducing transferring appropriations. Is there any discussion to the motion? Now, Mr. Mokrisky, this be a roll call item or?
No, it's a resolution.
Okay, resolution. All right, fine. Thank you. Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Onward to our number four item, some honest recognition of our University of Oregon Outstanding Community Partners Award. I see some folks in the vote there, so Mr. Mokrisky and your illustrious staff, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity this morning. We know that you have a busy meeting, but we love to start our board meetings with recognitions. And you heard a couple weeks ago, when you heard from the students, both undergraduate and graduate level students, and the faculty from the University of Oregon, Planning Public Policy and Management School were here to present their projects about the award that we were given, but we sort of glossed over it because the meat of that discussion was about the students' presentations. So today, we wanted to recognize this Outstanding Community Partner Award that we received from the University of Oregon recently, the 3:00 PM program at the University of Oregon, recognizing this partnership that began in 2018. It sort of started with a simple conversation and an idea, and then it's been developed and nurtured and grown into what it is today because of really some outstanding individuals, both at the University of Oregon and here in Lane County. And so Professor Ben Clark is here with us from the University of Oregon. Ben was one of the catalysts for this project and really the passionate leader at the University of Oregon, along with Josh Bruce and Aniko Mullik-Durlik. Kind, Durlik-Mullik. Jeez. I really tried. I'm going to get it. Okay, it's from the University of Oregon. Those have been our partners. And I just, an incredible thank you and great work to Jeff Kincaid in County Administration, Steve Adams and our policy team, and Greg Rikoff, our Assistant County Administrator, who have been the county staff leads, just charging this thing forward. And it does take a lot of work. We coordinate with faculty. We meet regularly with the faculty in the 3:00 PM program, along with our leaders in Lane County, to sort of conceptualize ideas. So the questions the faculty at the university ask are, what are you, what are you working on? What are the issues that are of concern? And then we try, we discuss how we can turn those into actual projects. So I just want to make a few comments here. This program began in early 2018. It's the first of its kind that we're aware of in the country that pairs a county government with a public research university consistently and deliberately working together in a program fashion. Policy Lab, over the last seven years, has enabled the completion of over 50 projects in partnership with various courses such as public budgeting, public management, real-world Lane County, which has become an actual class that is, that are students that take on real-world problems, and then the MPA, the Masters in Public Administration, Kapstone Work. Hundreds of students have been able to connect with local government professionals through experiential coursework, convenings, internships, interviews, and other engagement opportunities. And we continue to develop this partnership and other engagement opportunities, expanding to the rural parts of Lane County that really are the places where, you know, the university has its base, its home here in the metro area of Eugene and Springfield, and the incredible assets that the university has are easily accessible here within the metro area. But our rural communities really need the resources that the university provides more than, more than any others. And so we've really worked to deepen those relationships with communities like Oak Ridge and Vanita, Cresswell and Cottage Grove, bringing elected officials into the classroom and hosting various chats with elected and appointed officials. So just so excited to recognize this. We go on and on. You all are very familiar with this program. I want to thank Commissioners for how engaged all five of you were in those presentations. It was like, we had to kind of go, we got it, we had to keep moving because you kept asking questions and wanting to know more about these different projects. And that's what we want, this, that's where these partnerships are really valuable, is when we can engage in this work, present information, and it helps to inform our decision-makers, our policymakers, and our community in solving challenges. So I'll stop there, and if anyone else would like to add, but this is really about recognizing our team and the university's team for their incredible work.
It'd be great to hear from the university next.
Okay, all right. Yes, Chair Lovell and Commission, I, so with this, this award, this is the second community partner that received this award. The conception of the award really came about because of this partnership. And, and something that, that I wanted to do from 3:00 PM to recognize how much our community provides a service to our students and to the University of Oregon. This, this partnership is an example for people around the country, and we've had the opportunity, Steve and I, to sort of preach the gospel of the Policy Lab to other Big Ten universities this spring. And, you know, we're very warmly received around the country, and, and the questions of, wow, I'm amazed, how can we do that too? And, and so it's really a testament to the folks sitting up here and the hard work that they, they put into this, day in and day out. We meet every week, pretty much all year round, the group of six, the two other folks that were mentioned at the University of Oregon and these three folks, and just making that partnership happen. The time and the effort that they put into it and the heart that this team puts into it, you know, a plaque is nice, but, you know, the, the work that they put into it is, is really transformed, I think, this student experience. And so that's why we wanted to present this award to, to this team here. Thank you.
Chair Lovell, Commissioners, we should probably also share that, you know, not only does Ben lead for the school of 3:00 PM, he's, will be recognized this fall with full professorship. So for those of you who know about the academy and know the, the journey to full professorship, we're excited that Ben's getting that recognition and will have that level of work on his plate. And we, of course, would like to think that it's no small part, this partnership that's helped bring him to the fore, although he's, there's a lot of great work that he does and is probably worth talking about one of these days. I did want to recognize Jeff Kincaid up here with, so many of us, we could leave this as really great thinking, but in terms of actually getting the work done, having the details followed, being the thought partner who is helping to make tactical and strategic decisions on a daily basis, Jeff has been just an exceptional partner. He gets time with you, kind of on focused issues. Wanted to let you know that he is the backbone of this program and could not be doing this without him. So thank you, and I just want to emphasize that we're singular here. This is the county and university doing this type of work, and the ability to bring that kind of energy and thoughtfulness to our 4,700 square miles is really a tremendous piece. It should be replicated across this country, but right now, we're it.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Wonderful. Good presentation. Anybody from the board that want to make some comments before we give them a lauded hand of applause? Commissioner Farr, go ahead.
I'll be brief. Dr. Clark, you know, it takes a great leader to have the vision to initiate a program like this, and you are a great leader. You've demonstrated that. Congratulations on your full professorship. I mistakenly thought that you'd achieved that a long time ago, but this work is unbelievable, not just for what you do in this room here, but what you do for the lives of the young men, women, and the people who are in your classes. So I, I can't begin to thank you enough. I'll also take this time, Dr. Clark, to thank you for being my appointee to the Charter Review Committee. All those, in addition to all of the work that you do at the university, you stepped out and did all of that work simultaneously. Dr. Clark, thank you very much.
Christopher.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you again for the recognition from the University of Oregon. Clearly, our staff is exceptional and very proud of them to have earned this reward. I do have a question, though. Are we the only ones that do this kind of partnership? Or are there just only a few in the country?
There are many, many policy labs, metropolitan policy labs. You see pairings with municipalities all over the place. You don't see counties partnering with tier-one research universities.
There's actually a national organization called the Metro Lab, which is sort of a coalition of universities and municipalities that work together. So as Mr. Rikoff said, yeah, the, the concept of Policy Lab is certainly not new, and it happens in a lot of other, in a lot of places, but it's city governments that are working with universities, which makes, which makes sense in a lot of ways, but the relationship between a county government and a university is, is, this is the only one that we're aware of.
We need a county lab, basically.
Commissioner Triger.
I'll just, thank you. I'll just say, riffing on that, this might be something to talk about at NACO conference next year with some folks. I don't know if our administrator, with your administrators group of NACO, our National Association of Counties, has shared, but this is a great opportunity to, to share that with our, with our national colleagues, because it is, it's such an impactful, for us at the county, right, real policy solutions that your students have identified, has made it all the way through our process and up to the state legislature into bills that have been signed, most recently one in particular to the rural community of Mapleton, as you mentioned. So it is real-world work happening, and it's, and so thank you for appreciating this partnership and this organization. And I think it's, it is always one of the highlights of the year is when we get the report back and engage with the Policy Lab students. So thank you.
First, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, as Mr. Mokrisky kind of hit on, it is a, you know, this is a very powerful partnership, and, and you do have to kind of hold your questions back. I don't know how far Chair let us go over, but I mean, it could have been an absolute runaway. And I was kind of joking up in the BCC conference room when I said we should have scheduled four hours, but I mean, it was probably a realistic number. And then to, to follow up with Commissioner Triger, these are real-world solutions that we're coming up with. I mean, you know, how great did Mason do for Mapleton and, and West Lane there? And then teaming up with Rep. Wright and Vanessa to get all that stuff actually through? And, you know, that's a, that's a bug Mason caught that might be addicting. And then just when I was leaving, I was kind, I kind of caught Julian Hernandez, because that, that was something that I'm very passionate about is volunteering time, and I, my passion doesn't touch where he was at on that. We talked and talked and talked, and I had no idea that he was a pitcher for the UVO team. He's on a jet doing homework, and this was one of his projects that he wouldn't let go because he wanted to finish it out. So, you know, that comes from having great professors there that are, that are inspiring these kids to continue on. And I think as we all move in these careers, we realize how, how important those relationships are. So thank you, and this, this is great work. It truly is.
Good deal. Echo all those commands and all those compliments, but the thing that I brought out of all the compliments that you shared, one to another, is that all of you are committed to giving us something that we could never give you back, and that's your time and your expertise for doing what you do. So I want to thank you for your time, something that you give us that we could never pay you back for, for doing what you do. So Professor, I hope we can call you that today. Is that, when is that official?
September the 15th.
Oh, well, we'll have to hold off just for a little bit, but we'll just cheat today. Well, thank you again very much, everyone. Well done. Our public comments are coming up. Public can speak here in person in Harris Hall or online. Time is limited to three minutes. We'll ask that you please watch the clock on the screen over here and stop at the three-minute mark so we can be fair to each one of those who want to share. You also can submit public comments via our website in writing at least 24 hours ahead of our meeting to be included in the weekly packet. So if you'd step to the microphone, please state your name for the record. We'll call up first Linda Loric, followed by Laura Shu, please.
Morning, Chairman Lovell and all Commissioners. My name is Linda Lovick, with a V. I'm returning to petition you all again on behalf of us local access road residents in River Road and Santa Clara neighborhoods. The vast majority of us in this situation just learned our LAR status and its implications a few months ago. As a reminder, these LARS are first and foremost geographically within the Lane County public road system. LARS are connected to, feed into, lead off of county-maintained roads, and in every other way, most LARS are indistinguishable from the county-maintained roads. They also are within the much later-developed urban growth boundary, which the county uses to resist declaring the LARS part of its system and further requires the city to annex them. The City of Eugene pushes back, saying LARS should rest with the county. Meanwhile, homeowners on LARS are involuntarily placed in this artificially-created limbo with no end in sight. The fundamental effect of this limbo is the unfair burden of responsibility for LAR maintenance and repairs, and maybe even road users' harms, placed on these homeowners. Again, as a reminder, the LARS are used exactly like the county-maintained roads. And while all our transportation taxes are collected identically, those taxes from LAR residents are not fairly or equitably applied to their own public road when it's designated an LAR. This remains unacceptable. Both sides claim money shortfalls, meaning the county and the city. I get this. What I don't get is your unwillingness so far to give proper corrective attention to this injustice, this inequality of treatment of county residents. I would assert here that, that if any of you Commissioners or your Public Works Department colleagues lived on an LAR, none of you would pass it off with a simple sympathetic nod. This situation, rearing its ugly head now in 2025, took decades of inattention, but we know where there's a will, there's a way. It's just a matter of intentionality. We are simply asking that Lane County declares the designated LARS part of its Lane County road system in their current condition. We don't demand immediate maintenance. Rather, we beseech Lane County to correct the injustice and slot the LARS into the maintenance, maintenance schedule for an equal chance of maintenance at the appropriate time of need, equal to all the other county-maintained roads in residential Eugene. It just takes the will to admit an old inherited mistake, an injustice, an old lapse, and to correct the wrong. Voters respect honesty and humility, the admission of a gap and commitment to fill it.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Laura Shu, followed by Eleanor Lipinski.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Laura Shu. I'm speaking for myself this morning, not for the ARCO Board. In your work session on local access roads, Public Works presented you not with the information that you'd need to make the right decision, but instead with the excuses to justify inaction. They told you that the budget is in bad shape, but they presented no evidence showing that accepting these 12 miles of roads into the road system would materially impact the current 1,400 miles. They told you that these roads are LARS because developers built substandard roads to save money. While that's true possibly of a few LARS in the UGB, it is not true of most of them. Most of them are identical to county-maintained roads. We've told you that this is deeply unfair, particularly since LAR homeowners pay the same taxes as those on county-maintained roads, but it hasn't so far moved you to action. Let me be clear on the depth of the injustice here. Lane County is violating the U.S. and Oregon constitutional rights of LAR homeowners to equal protection under the law. There is no rational basis for the unequal treatment that is not unfair and discriminatory. You cannot grant privileges under the Oregon Constitution to some citizens which upon the same terms do not belong equally to all citizens. And certainly, being on roads that function and even look the same and paying the same taxes constitutes same terms. Now, our roads cannot wait for annexation. Only about 17% of LAR homes in the River Road neighborhood are annexed, and that's probably similar on county-maintained roads. The county must care for these roads in the meantime, or the city will never be afford to take on the crumbled mess that results. It's your job as elected officials to cut through staff excuses and to protect the citizens of this county. Please end these constitutional rights violations and accept these roads into the county road system. Also, please accept our invitation to take you and staff on a tour of our neighborhood as we've done with Commissioner Senega and Councilor Leach, so that you can see our perspective firsthand. And Council, Commissioner Senega knows how to get in touch with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eleanor Lipinski, followed by Joel Coran.
Boy, Linda and Laura did a beautiful job of describing our situation. I must just agree with what they said. I only have a couple of comments to throw in. I'm really concerned about this argument that's been laid out, that there were developers who did a poor job of putting in roads, and that's why these roads are designated LARS. I don't believe this. I know that in the case of our house, it was built by the original owners, and as I look around and I see the other houses on our road, they're different. They're unique. Now, developers, that's not how they build. They build similar houses because it's too expensive, and there's nothing in it for them to build really different houses. So personally, I really doubt that, and I would like to say that this, that this argument be proven or substantiated in some way, or that it just be abandoned and not be used as a reason not to take care of our roads. Secondly, I want to know where our tax money has gone for road maintenance. So our house is like 60 years old, and the other houses in our neighborhood are similar. So, our house is like 60 years old, and the other houses in our neighborhood are similarly decades old. So, for all those years, road maintenance taxes have been paid. I want to know what the plan is for refunding us that money since it has not been used to take care of our roads. And then finally, I'm really disappointed with the reaction that the Board has taken on this. To me, it's just a very clear injustice. It's not fair that we have been treated this way. We should be treated like everybody else, we're paying our taxes like everybody else. And I would expect some outrage and some dedication to fixing this problem from the Board. And I just don't feel right now like the money that's being paid for the salaries of the Board is giving me my taxpayers' money worth. And I'm being very straightforward about this and very direct, and I'm just telling you in fact, I'm really unhappy with the reaction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joel Corin, followed by David Igle.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Do you ever feel like a second-class citizen? That's pretty much the way we feel about this issue. The definition, state definition of a public road is over which the public has a right of use that is a matter of record. The public clearly is using all the roads that are LARS in River Road and Santa Clara. It's just the fact that we're not a matter of record. Well, why not? We're told it's historical. When was your road built? Well, saying this is historical is an excuse, not an explanation. There's no reason now why these roads should be treated differently. The real, well, two things. One, according to the county's document on LARS, the sellers are supposed to give notice to prospective buyers that they are on an LAR. I know I never got any notice, and I don't know that anybody has received any notice that you're on an LAR. Would it have changed my mind about buying? Maybe, if I could find a similar house on a public road. The real concern that I have, and this was brought out at the meeting that we had, is the catch-22 that we are in. If someone gets damaged, hurt, riding a bicycle into a pothole on an LAR and sustained serious injury, the injured person can sue the homeowners on that block. We don't have, well, we don't have immunity, and the thing is that we can't insure ourselves against that eventuality. I contacted State Farm, my carrier, and specifically asked the question, "I'm on an LAR? Can I buy insurance?" And the answer is no, we don't cover what's in the street. So, this is a major difference between us, the second-class citizens, and the people that don't have, don't live on LARS. And I think there are many reasons that you should accept these highways, but that protecting us, the county has immunity. The county can't be sued. Why should we? Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Igle, and lastly, followed by Bill Compton.
Good morning, David Igle. The Lane County History Museum Director, Keith Lowes, has stated that he has no intention of informing the public of the racing to change exhibits insulting misinformation defaming the reputations of many Eugene citizens. Many of these individuals have living families and have been deeply hurt by this misinformation. The museum has, in addition to misrepresenting dystopian fiction as documented history, there's been a great deal of misconduct in recent years in the operation of the museum. Bob Hart canceled a meeting with me because of my research that exposed the U of O Dunn-Hall report as a fraud. Mr. Hart subsequently removed me from an Historical Society annual meeting being held on Zoom because I had respectfully and appropriately and in Q and A expressed my concern about Professor Dunn. Mr. Hart then altered the video record of the meeting to eliminate my appearance. When Jennifer Yeh was a director and Bart Akins was chairman of the Board, prior to the Board elections, I was denied access to the Board membership as Oregon nonprofit laws require. Bob Hart and Bart Akins are currently on the museum advisory boards. I am a member of this society but was not invited to the annual meeting this report this year, although I was told I was sent a ballot, et cetera, but I never received it. The documented history is available. I've already put it together. I asked that the Commissioners request that the museum provide information and apology to the public for the misinformation that was provided. It's right there. It doesn't cost anything. They don't have to put on a special exhibit. They can just make sure it's available. Clear, people come in during the county fair when most of the visitors arrive. Tax-sourced funds were provided to present authentic history, not dystopian fiction, and as I see it, the public's been defrauded. I hope you'll put some effort into this, and hopefully we get some of the stuff cleaned up. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Bill Compton, and then we'll go to our online queue.
Good morning, Bill Compton with Cornerstone Leadership Consulting. Did you feel it? Did you feel the energy in the conversation that was shared? It was wonderful. A man of vision, working with another man of vision, to bring about a beautiful partnership. Is that what I heard? Heather, I saw you, big smile on your face, on the beauty of the relationship between Ben Clark and Lane County and working with projects and their students so that they're providing some really wonderful experiences and coming back to Lane County. Did I recognize and understand that correctly? That's amazing. I would love to have that partnership, too. So, when I come, there's smiles, and I'm like, wow, Bill is coming and wants to help grow the power of Lane County. And you know, our hearts are really fundamentally desiring security and safety, as we've talked about before. It's the human heart. And so, recently, we lost six deputies and then two additional, or gone to different states. And then we know that based upon some of the things I read in the budget, that there will be two additional positions not funded. Legacy leadership is powerful in recognizing a need and people coming together and working together to provide powerful solutions. I was recently, went to a leadership conference where there was a beautiful young woman that came out, and she was a CEO of a big company, and she was talking about priorities and how important they are. And she said, "My priority in the morning, getting up, getting to work, was I looked good when I walked in the door." And I don't know how you do this, but she was putting on her makeup and driving down the road in a rainstorm. She was in Texas, flash flood, bridge is out. Her priority was to look good. She went off the bridge and was in the water. And her car was sinking, and she had the opportunity to slit the seatbelt and get out. She said, "My only priority was not to look good. My priority was life." Priorities can bring life or death. Lane County public safety is a life and death issue, and I want to be one who champions Lane County Commissioners in providing for that priority. I want to know how to do that. Today, I'm going to be at your 2:30 meeting. I'm excited about the Public Safety Committee that's worked so feverishly over years. I want to be supportive and encouraging. I want to partnership. I want to help. Tell me how to do that. We should look at things that are not priorities, things that are not essential. Thank you for allowing me to come and encourage you to be legacy leaders. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I've got a message that there is no online, folks, as public testimony, so we Commissioners sincerely want to thank you for coming out this morning and giving us your thoughts. We've taken all careful notes, and we will consider those going forward. Thank you again. Our item six is our consent calendar. All items listed here are routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion was desired, that item would have been removed from the consent calendar and would be considered separately. Details to each of these items can be found in the blue links attached to the item descriptions on the posted online agenda. Looking for a motion for the consent calendar.
Chair, I move to approve the consent calendar for June 24, 2025.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair to approve the consent calendar, seconded by Commissioner Buck. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Our next item is the Health and Human Services items, and at this time, I'd like to give the floor temporarily to Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to clear conflict of interest on this item. It involves St. Vincent de Paul Lane County. I'm related to the Executive Director Emeritus, who is still employed by that agency, so I'm going to excuse myself, and if somebody could let me know when you're all done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. This is pertaining to Order 25062409 in the matter of approving contract actions with St. Vincent de Paul Society and delegating authority to the county administrator, their designee or sub-designee to sign the approved actions. And with us is Mr. Zach Evans, Health and Human Services Assistant Director. Good morning, Zach. How are you?
Doing well. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. We have a short item for your consideration this morning. It's two expense contracts with St. Vincent de Paul funded by the Oregon Housing Community of Services, and one will be for extreme weather emergency shelter, and the other a year-round safe sleep site, emergency shelter for adults.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the Board for Zach? Seeing none, I will look forward for a motion.
Chair, I move to approve Order 25062409 in the matter of approving contract actions with St. Vincent de Paul Society and delegating authority to the county administrator, their designee or their subdelegate to sign approved actions.
Second to the motion.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Triger in the matter of approving the contract with St. Vincent de Paul and delegating the authority to the county administrator, their designee or sub-designee, and to approve the approved actions per Order 25062409. All those in favor, I'll call for the vote. All those that indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Buck recused. And if someone would get her, please. Zach, thank you very much for your presentation. Have a great day, sir. Onto our county administration item. We are back circling back to budget, and so we are back to Order and Resolution 25062410 in the matter of adopting the 2025-26 Lane County budget-making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes. And with us online is Ms. Christine Moody. Once again, kind of like deja vu, isn't it?
Yes, yes. But it never ends.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So, one, a couple highlights for you before we get into the adoption. One technical correction that I'd like to point out, and then we will send an updated attachment to Jessica, just so there isn't confusion. There's an Attachment B to the memo that details those items that I mentioned at your public hearing a couple weeks ago, where departments have looked at their budgets to ensure that what we're adopting is the most recent information that they have. So, there's changes that they're requesting, sometimes reducing FTE, sometimes increasing, adjusting revenues, and then those rebudgets that I mentioned when we just had the supplemental budget. So, the correction I want to point out is that Item 27 on page two of that Attachment B should not have an FTE number next to it. It's just simply a revenue payment of the interfund loan that's occurring in supplemental three, so don't want to confuse the, that it doesn't add up if you went through the entire attachment. The couple other highlights that I'll give you is the budget, final budget that you just approved for the supplemental. We'll put the 24-25 current year budget right about 1.22 million inside, or sorry, billion in size, and then the one that you're adopting is 1.21. So, just highlighting that because our budget is staying very flat year to year as far as a total budget amount. But the one that I will also highlight is the FTE. So, the adopted budget in the 24-25 budget was just about 2,082 FTE. You are adopting a budget that has 2,002 FTE. So, despite the budget staying the same size, we are seeing 80 less FTE across all funds, and that's just showing that increase in costs that you've heard about through Budget Committee and department presentations. The other thing I will just highlight on Exhibit B, the couple highlights of what's changing since you last saw it with the approved budget. Total appropriations in Attachment B are going up about 18.5 million, most of that because of that interfund loan and the rebudgeting of projects that haven't happened. And then you will see there's places, like I said, FTE going down. Something we specifically pointed out for the Budget Committee was the loss of the EPA grant. We told you that we would bring back those adjustments in H and HS with the adoption rather than the approval, and so you'll see that decrease of 2 and 1/4 FTE happening there specific to that grant. So, those are the big highlights, but I'm open for any questions or discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. To the Board. Yes, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. I have a couple of questions regarding FTE. Just to make it for clarity, the budget remains relatively flat from the previous year's budget, but we're reducing by 80 FTE. That's spread out across the different departments in the county. And do we have an itemization as to which departments the FTEs are reduced in? I don't need to hear it right now, but that itemization is available.
Yes, and in the adopted document, it will be even more spelled out for you by department, by program, by division, and discussing what those reductions are. So, yes, the public will be able to find that. Of course, it's in the proposed budget, so anything that we're adding to that proposed budget or decreasing from that proposed budget will be in that adopted document. It's usually available online about 90 days after adopted. We'll see if we can get it out there sooner, but it takes a while to create that large document to have it out there for the public.
Excellent. And we were all, all five of us were involved with the five citizen members to pass this budget and to bring it forward to, for this adoption at this point in time. So, we're all aware of the reductions that were made. We're all aware of the different departments, and we all lament that reductions are being made in FTEs, but that is a necessity of the times with the particular budget that we're, that we're passing today or that presumably are passing today. And each department did receive some FTE cuts, as I recall from the discussion. Looking for confirmation on that.
Most departments, yes. I think our Public Works Department maybe did not have as many this time, but you see the bulk of the reductions in Health and Human Services, that is our largest department that has the most FTE. That makes sense. Then you do see it in the areas of, the Sheriff's Office has a couple other central services in the general fund, so it is spread across departments. It's definitely not occurring in just one place.
Thank you. Commissioner Triger.
Thank you. And just for clarification, FTE reductions are one way that the current fiscal challenges are expressed in the budget, but there are other reductions, even though they, they're not FTE reductions. There's reductions in revenue and expenses in, across departments, just, so everybody's feeling the pain.
Correct. Yes, yes. They might have adjusted just the material and services, reducing training of employees was a big place that we saw. There's also a lot of the pass-through funds, so even in that area of the EPA grant that we've mentioned, a lot of that money was going to pass out of the county to contractors in the community. So, that might not be showing up as an FTE, but it's a definite community impact.
Just to make, just for folks watching, that all of the fiscal challenges are both in terms of people, people performing the work, but also the resources internally and, as you say, pass through to the community.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chair, do you mind if I just make a quick comment there?
Please, go ahead.
At this point, we talked about this, and you know, this is a long budget process, so sometimes these things get lost at this phase of the conversation, but we, I believe, and Christine can correct me here, the reductions to central services, what we call central services, which are the areas that support things like human resources and technology and facilities and all of those in administration, all those things that support the direct services, all of those areas took an average of 6% reduction. Then the direct services, it was an average of, I believe, around 5% with the exception of the sheriff, the district attorney, and the assessor that took 1% or less. So, I just want to be clear, we had some public testimony this morning about prioritization... So I just want to be clear, we had some public testimony this morning about prioritization and, you know, and we hear about efficiencies and those types of things. I want to make it really clear that we do have, this is a priority-based budget. It is a reflection of what the board has identified as its priorities, and it's also a recognition of a very complex set of revenues and expenses and sort of the restrictions around all of those things. It was not, it is not across the board everyone the same. It is reductions based on various factors, primarily priority-based.
I would just add to that, that that is specific to the general fund that is being referred to, which is the fund we pay a lot of attention to, right, because it's our discretionary fund. But that's why you will hear things like Public Works maybe not taking as much reduction. They have different funding sources. So those percentages that were just stated are related to the discretionary general fund being used in those areas. Yes.
Right. Good. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? All right, Vice Chair, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve Order and Resolution 25062410 in the matter of adopting the 25-26 Lane County Budget Making Appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Buck to move approval adopting the 25-26 Lane County Budget Making Appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes per Board Order and Resolution 25062410. I'll call for the vote. All those in, any discussions in motion, rather. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Great. Ms. Moody, thank you very much, and back to the numbers as they say, right? Thank you again. Mr. Mokraski, we've got some time before our 10:15, so if you have lengthy announcements, this is the day.
I don't have lengthy, I'm actually wondering if we could recess. I wanted to pull, we have a dashboard, a deflection program dashboard that we've created, and I'd love to show it to you all upstairs in the BCC, because we're going to, you're going to do your 10:15 in the BCC. If you don't mind recessing and then maybe reconvening five minutes before, maybe a 10, five or 10 after 10?
Let's, okay, that sounds good. Let's recess, and we'll convene at five minutes after in the Board of County Commissioners room. We are recessed.
Good morning and welcome back from recess. This is still the regular meeting of the Board of Accounting Commissioners. Today is still Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. We left off with Mr. Mokrhaisky's announcements. And you still have some time, sir. So knock yourself out.
Thank you. Thanks for convening a few minutes early before we get to the 10:15 time certain. Wanted to set up this dashboard to show you. You're all familiar with the Behavioral Deflection Program. And so I wanted to walk through this. And Mr. Rikoff, maybe you can walk through the specific dashboard. But if you go to lanecountyor.gov and you can search or sort of click your way through to find this Behavioral Health Deflection Program page, you can find all the information about what the program is, who we serve, who's eligible for the program. Again, this is a state-funded program. It was a Measure 110 reform, part of the Measure 110 Reform Package, to provide an off-ramp for folks from the criminal justice engagement with, from their engagement with law enforcement and the criminal justice system into treatment for those who qualify for lower-level offenses, as opposed to either going to jail or doing nothing. So this program in Lane County, Lane County has really leaned into this work and it's been very successful. We've had a number of graduations that have occurred where individuals have graduated through the program, really inspiring. And so what we've now developed is, on this page, you can find a dashboard. So Jeff's going to click on the deflection dashboard there, see that tab. And you click on that tab and then it brings up this dashboard that is updated every morning. And Mr. Rikoff, do you want to walk through this?
Certainly. So first of all, just a quick reminder, it is a behavioral health deflection program and the state has named it such. A lot of folks will just use the short-term deflection. What we've tried to do with this, and a real debt of gratitude goes out, Courtney Runkel from Chris Perosa's office, Christine Atkinson from Community Justice, but more than anyone else, Ally Knapp out of Tech Services helped design this so we could have ready information that we think answer most of the questions community members have. We start, of course, with the participants, those that are currently in, you know, the totals in terms of where we've been, the success rate, and ongoing effort, and then those who've been removed. We wanted to have the average days in the program to help folks understand that people are making a commitment and we are making a commitment to them. So please note under the "removed from program," you know, 51 days, we're not giving up after 30. You know, we've heard again and again that this is, you know, such a challenge. People are going from having been identified by others as needing these services to really start to come to terms with whether or not they believe they need those services and then really getting into services. If you can scroll down a little bit. We thought it was important to capture the nature of the work. The, you know, this was designed for possession of controlled substances. Again, Chris Perosa has led the state in the number of charges that can be deflected and the fact that the non-drug-related crimes are so significant that it tends to be the behavioral issues, quality-of-life things that are going on. So we really want to show those numbers. And then you can see that virtually all of the law enforcement agencies in Lane County are deferring, with, of course, the majority of those being in the metropolitan area. Scroll down a little. Oh, yeah, there we go. So you get the chance to see the growth, how quickly we grew from October of last year, and really the significant numbers that we continue to engage. Let's go down and look at the program participant demographics. No real surprises there. It tends to be less of a younger demographic. You know, these are individuals that, you know, really are having their behaviors have escalated to the point where people are noticing law enforcement's getting involved, you know, but there is relative gender balance here. Can you scroll down a little bit further? You know, we do have the race in ethnicity and you can see a little bit more in the age Definition, let's scroll a little bit further. And you can see that there is some overrepresentation in the program. There is greater overrepresentation in the justice system. So it's good for us to be attentive. Are we at the bottom already?
Yep.
Okay. I was expecting to see a slide of the services used. Of course, we've used over 100 different agency services in the short time we've been up and going. It's really been across the board and that comes from, with the person-centered focus of the work, really tailing the individual's experience to the appropriate service. We needed all 100. We didn't want to get into the actual number of times groups are being, individuals are being referred to, individual agencies. Didn't want to make it look like a competition. Vast majority of these are working with Volamic Family Treatment, but it really does cut across the board, including the Kokal Wellness Center, which was wonderful to see. It's fairly high up on the list. So this readily available to the community. The state will be publishing these numbers probably once a year and it'd be more of a static snapshot of how all the counties are doing. We thought this was an important enough service that we could use this as part of the FAQs so folks can see the ongoing work. Questions, thoughts?
Yes, Commissioner Trigg.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. And we are only, what, eight months into our first year?
Yes.
So we're averaging serving a couple dozen people a month deflecting through deflection, which is amazing. And my question, oh, and so how frequently is the dashboard updated? Are these per quarter, per month?
We're updating this daily.
Daily?
Yeah.
Great.
So technology is amazing. We have access to it and the team that's dedicated to doing this, yeah, the commitment's great.
So given that eight-month, the on-ramp, have we seen an increasing number of people being deflected month over month? And is this sort of a trend of as law enforcement and our partners learn how to use the resource?
By and large, yes. We're seeing a little, some peaks and valleys in there, you know, as circumstances change for law enforcement agencies. So we're continuing, our navigators are continuing to do ride-alongs, do presentations at staff briefings for the various law enforcement departments. We notice after we've had a chance to have engagement with a police department, those numbers continue to go up. So we're still building some muscle memory. It will be interesting to see how this plays out over time.
Great, yeah. Jeff was kind enough to pull up the graph that shows that. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Any other thoughts? Oh, we're out of time.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for giving the time. Just wanted to...
I figured we were going to go a little bit over. I've had a couple of questions, but I'll meet later. Yeah, this is great. Good job. I mean, the other question I have is just, I mean, it's almost a double-edged sword. We help people, but with less people in the jail, we don't, we get less jail money. Is that kind of the trade-off here or is it a good-bad trade-off or is it all just good?
I think if we were to have Chris Perosa and Clint Riley here, they would say there's nothing but good here. The cost of the systems are so significant and the cost of filing charges and staffing, you know, those cases are so significant. Everything we can take out at this front end. And if these individuals are really, really struggling, it's awful to say, but we will see them again in the system.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, those levels of care and the incarceration are very low, so you're going to see those folks. So, good job. Well done. All right. Great. We have our presentation and discussion ahead of us of adopting our 2527 Strategic Plan, Order Number 25062411. We have our Jeff Kincaid Senior Operational Analyst and a host of staff members. Jeff, do you want to introduce those or would you rather I do or?
I'm happy to. Or Steve has comments first. Okay. Warren Chair, Level of Commissioners. Jeff Kincaid Senior Operational Analyst. I have with me today Judy Williams, Chief of Staff, Laura Holkreev, Executive Assistant to the County Administrator here, Fatima Amada, our County Equity Officer, Tynah Salteshak, our Right-On-Time, our County Data and Analytics Officer. And then we have Annie Rose from now Baker Tilly. So we have Moss Adams and Baker Tilly on here. And I just wanted to, I'll do brief comments. Annie Rose is going to cover a lot of it. We've set aside about hour and 45 for this. We're hoping that, calling it time for discussion and hopefully adoption at the end of today. But we're going to go over the process. This is not the end. It's not like the culmination of this process. We're kind of at like a really big milestone in the middle where we're looking at, here's the framework that we've developed, here's all the input we've received, and then we're going to take that with our management team and develop action items and key performance indicators for the next year and kind of set that tone for how we do things each year after that. So we're excited. I'm excited. This feels like a big culmination thing, but I'm looking, there's so much more work after this, but this is a really good time with the board. So I'll pass over to Annie Rose and she'll walk us through kind of the process we've gone through to date and where we're at and then next steps.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all so much for having me here today. I'm really looking forward to this, as Jeff was saying, this moment in this process that you've all been with us on for the last several months. So if you can go to the next slide. What we're going to do today is I want to provide a brief overview of the planning process. I don't think any of this will be a surprise to any of you, or I hope it won't be a surprise to any of you, but I want to detail some additional pieces that we've been doing in the last month or so around community engagement and employee engagement that has gotten us to this point as well. So we're going to go through that process. And then we're going to go through the, what we're calling the strategic framework. These are the core elements of the strategic plan. So this is the vision, mission, values, core behavior, strategic lenses, as well as the strategic goals and objectives. And as Jeff also mentioned already, there will be next steps coming out of this. Once we have these pieces confirmed and hopefully adopted, then the management team will be working on identifying the relevant performance measures to go alongside these pieces, as well as the action items for year one. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what that process is going to look like. So if you can go to the next slide. I am here today representing the Baker Tilly team, formerly known as the Moss Adams Team. We recently merged with Baker Tilly, so we're going by a new title. Forgive me if I refer to myself as being part of the Moss Adams Team. It is still very new. But we have a whole host of other folks who are not with me today, but who've been critical to this work as well. So I want to thank them all for their participation. And then on the next slide, I really want to give a huge shout-out to the staff team that has been supporting this work. It's just been incredible to have a true collaborative partner as we go through this and they've been really, really instrumental in both providing shape for this process, making sure that the employees are brought into this work, and making sure that the community voices are reflected. So really, really big shout-out to all of the work that has been happening there. If you go to the next slide and then we can move forward, the purpose of this, I think we all know, but I'm going to say it out loud anyways, which is we want to get a three-year strategic plan for the county. And the goal for that strategic plan is that it can guide the activities for these next three years, that it can help articulate what are the priorities for the county, but then also lay out a clear path that says, this is what we're going to focus on. Strategic plans have a tendency to become an everything-in-the-kitchen-sink exercise sometimes, where you're trying to get every single thing that the county does reflected in the plan and every potential priority reflected here. And I will say, there's been huge leadership from this group, from the senior management team, to make sure that this plan is really streamlined and reflective of true priorities. Knowing that the county cannot accomplish every single possible thing, we want this plan to be reflective of what are the most critical things for the county in these next three years. I hope that that's what you see reflected in this framework. If you go to the next slide, as a reminder, within a strategic plan, there's a couple different elements. So the first that we start with are the foundational statements, the vision statement, the mission statement, the values, and in this case, the core behaviors and strategic lenses. So we'll go through that piece. Then that's meant to flow down into big-picture strategic goals. What are the broad kind of buckets, the areas of work that we're going to be looking at? Then within each strategic goal, there's a set of more specific objectives. And this is really where we start getting an understanding of specifically what are we trying to accomplish in order to achieve that large goal? And then under each objective, traditionally, there are a whole set of activities. And we're going to come back to the activities later on as well, but that's the general framework that we're going to be going through here today. So with that, I do want to share a little bit more on the next slide about our process of engagement, because we really want to make sure for any strategic plan, but especially one for a county that is very large and very diverse, we want to make sure that this is an iterative process, where we're receiving feedback from the board, we're receiving feedback from staff and the management team, and we're receiving feedback from community stakeholders. Now, getting all of that feedback in means that we're going to get some pieces of feedback that conflict with each other, which means we're not going to include every single piece of feedback in the planning process. But it's really important to make sure that, especially as leadership teams are making decisions about what to include or not in the plan, that we can hear from all of those voices and make sure that we have a strong, broad understanding of what are the potential range of priorities and needs that might be reflected here, so that that can be brought into the decision-making process. So in order to meet that need, we went through quite a long process with you all, several months long. So if you go to the next slide, we have all of the steps lined up here. Really started back in December, working on this. So a full six months plus of this work. And what you'll see reflected here is that we went through a series of different engagement opportunities with the board, with senior management, with staff, and with community members. And I want to go through a couple of, well, I'm going to go through a long list, just to give you a sense of the type of engagement that was done here. So one of the things that we started with were interviews with members of the board, with senior leadership, but we also wanted to hear from staff. So we did an all-staff survey at the beginning of this process. And these surveys were provided online and in paper to make sure that they were accessible to staff working across the county. We also did an initial community survey to receive, again, initial input to help shape some of our beginning conversations around the foundational pieces of the strategic plan. We, as I mentioned, we interviewed folks. We interviewed 24 members of leadership as part of this work. We had five community focus groups where we invited members of key groups like local businesses, nonprofit, human resource providers, advocacy groups, and advisory board members were invited to participate in these focus groups so that we could hear from different perspectives around what will be important for the plan. And we also had a county-wide supervisors' meeting. We wanted to engage that level of leadership within the county so that they could see the results of the all-employee survey and provide feedback upward to senior management to say, these are the really important pieces that we think you should be paying attention to as we move forward, based on our knowledge of our team. Then, once we had a draft plan in place, we went through another large round of gathering input, because we wanted to make sure that folks had something to respond and react to as well. So at that point, we had four employee open houses that were in-person and they were at a variety of locations around the county. We also had an online version of this for accessibility. We had another employee survey, again, both online and paper-based. We had a community in-person open house and a virtual open house as well, to make sure that there were options for folks. And there was a large community survey to gather feedback on the draft plan in particular. And we then did a meeting to review that community and employees' survey feedback and open-house feedback with the management team to bring in and take into consideration what are the key themes that were coming through, so we can incorporate them into the draft plan. And one thing I should note is that we did, from the initial community survey, there were areas within the county that we did not hear from. So when we came back and did the second survey and the second round of open houses, we made sure that there were flyers posted in 17 locations across the county. We had social media, we had press releases part of that too. So a big thank you to staff that worked to get the word out about that, so that we could make sure that there was at least an option, that people knew that this activity was happening. So all of those pieces together, we had over 475 members, either employees or members of the community, participate in this work. And I want to give just a huge thank you to everyone who shared their feedback as part of this process, who shared comments and input. They were taken very seriously, because that's a really important part of the buy-in for a plan like this, is making sure that it can be reflective of a wide range of priorities. So on that note, I'd love to move forward then into the actual strategic framework itself. So there are a few items that we were trying to build off of the previous strategic plan and say, what's working for us well? What do we want to keep and continue forward versus what might we want to shift? So you will see here that we do have an updated version of the vision statement, the mission statement, and some additions to the values. On the vision statement, this was probably the statement that we had the most adjustments to over the course of this process. When we did especially the second community and employee survey feedback, one key element, we have a full summary of that that we can provide to you, but one key element was that none of these items received less than 60% positive support. So that's huge. That's really fantastic. We're looking for over 50% positive support. So the fact that all of these statements received over 60 was really fantastic. But the one that received the most comments was this vision statement. So we kept working on it, because we wanted to make sure that it could be reflective of really what the aim is here. So we talked about having a thriving community, where everyone who lives within that community can live, work, and play. That's the language that we settled on here, because we wanted to get to that idea that people are living here, that they are able to work here, that they are able to recreate and have thriving lives within the county. That's what we're aiming toward. For the mission statement, this might look familiar to some, as this, previously, there was a purpose statement that said, "We are here to improve lives." And what we realized through the course of conversation is that the mission statement and the purpose statement really could be streamlined together, because the whole reason why the folks who show up every day to do this work, why they are here, the mission of the county, is to improve lives, so that we can have this vision... so that we can have this vision that's included here. So we collapsed those two items together to better streamline and clarify what these statements are. For the values, you will see, previously, we had the values of integrity, excellence, equity, and respect within the last strategic plan. And here, we've retained those, because we received really positive feedback about those as a concept. We added the idea of connection, because that was a really key theme that was coming up, both in feedback in some of our work sessions, as well as in some of the engagement with employees and community members. And then the other thing that we did here was add in some definitions, so that we could clarify, what do we mean by connection? What do we mean by excellence? Because that was a big question that was coming up for folks. So we've added in that clarity there. The other piece, if you go to the next slide, the remaining items in this kind of core statement piece are the core behaviors and the strategic lenses. The core behaviors and the strategic lenses, in fact, both kind of flow out of your values. They are reflections, they're how you operationalize your values on a regular basis. So the core behaviors are, how do we expect our employees and our leaders to show up every single day as you are serving the public? What is reflected there? And we received really great feedback on these, so there's no changes to any of those statements. We heard that they're working really well for employees. Employees feel very connected to these statements. So we wanted to continue that good work forward. For the strategic lenses, these are basically frameworks for leaders to take into account as you are making decisions. And so there are three lenses here. And we captured a lot of the root of what was in these lenses that were developed as the part of the last strategic plan. But in this process, we refined these further. We got some really fantastic feedback, especially on this first item around collaborative partnerships, of wanting to refine the language here to reflect the fact that Lang County is one very critical agency, but one of many that will often work to solve the problems that are facing your community. So we want to take that into account and make sure that it's clear, you know, as the county is going through the work, you're always thinking, what is our role in this? What is the role of the other partners that we are working within? And how can we best show up and make sure that we have a common agenda and shared goals with the partners that you work with? The second item around stewardship of resources, this one remained primarily the same. We know that it continues to be incredibly important that the county is a strong steward of the resources, the financial resources, the natural resources, the people resources, kind of everything that goes into making the work in the county move forward. We know that we need to be responsible about it for today and into the future. And then finally, equity. This was another piece that we refined the definition a little bit more to make it more clear, more accessible for folks. But the core of that concept is there as well, which is that we want to make sure that everyone in the community has fair access to the services, opportunities, and tools, resources that are provided by the county. So those pieces, those are a little bit of what shifted in those. And now I'm going to go through the goals and the objectives as well, before taking questions on these. So you will see, within this draft, the core goals did not shift from the last strategic plan. We had some really great feedback saying, really, these are the same areas that we've been focusing on and that we need to continue to focus on in order to make sure that the county can move forward. So we have safe and healthy county, vibrant communities, robust infrastructure, and people and organizational health. So nothing shifted in the general topics that came into these goals. But what did shift was, how are we defining what these goals mean and the objectives beneath the goals? So the objectives that we will work toward in order to accomplish that goal. So within this, we have a new definition of what does "safe and healthy county" actually mean? Delivering equitable and integrated services to support health, housing, and public safety. And it is important, again, as part of this work, to focus in on what are these most important priorities? We really wanted to make sure that these definitions reflected, what are we really going to be focused on in the next three years? Again, we know that this plan is not reflective of every single item that the county does, but rather, we want this to be reflecting, what are the areas that we're going to put additional resources, time, energy, and effort towards? Because we know that this is what's going to help us move the needle on the most important things. So within this, you will see we have four objectives here around emergency response, healthcare access, homelessness response, and public safety sustainability, meaning public safety funding. And within this, again, you will see reflected here a lot of the key community priorities that came up in our initial outreach, but also in many of the other areas where the county has gathered information. And I think that that's something important to note through this process, that we didn't just rely on the information that was gathered as part of the strategic plan, but we were also looking to say, where else has the county been gathering information about community needs and priorities? For example, through your community health assessment. That is a really fantastic tool that gathered a huge amount of information about community needs. So that really helped to inform a lot of this work too, the previous work that the county has done on collecting data around community needs. And you see many of those items reflected here. On the next slide, we have goal two, which is around vibrant communities. And this is the one where I think the definition helps the most, because vibrant communities could be defined in many, many different ways, depending on who you ask. So we had a great conversation around how, what do we think of when we think of a vibrant community? Economic development was a piece of it. Inclusivity and diversity is a piece of it. Housing affordability and healthy environment. These were kind of the core factors that came to the front. And within this, you will see, again, reflected in the objectives. We have economic development, healthy environment, housing, and inclusive community support. One of the items that I want to call out here, and we tried to be thoughtful of this, and I think this is a good example, is thinking about, with the lens of the partnership, first and foremost, what is the role of the county in any one of these objectives? And the housing line here, I think, is really interesting, because it says, in coordination with local partners, support housing affordability and supply through infrastructure and incentives. So I think that's a great example of really clarifying that county has a very specific role to play in helping to tackle this issue. And we wanted to clarify that within this, saying, the county's role is really going to be through that infrastructure incentive support and in partnership with others. So just want to call that out as a good example of the work that went in to, again, narrow and focus and refine this. On the next slide, we have our third goal, which is robust infrastructure. And this one, there are only two objectives reflected here, which is not reflective of all of the infrastructure work that the county is actually doing. There's a huge amount of infrastructure work that is going on here. But what we wanted to do here is focus on what are going to be the most critical areas of infrastructure for the county to focus on in these next three years. And building infrastructure, specifically county-owned buildings and facilities, how are we dealing with deferred maintenance? How are we making sure that those are meeting our needs so that we can be serving the community in the best way possible? That is a key priority. And then cybersecurity and information technology as well. All of the system work and making sure that the systems are safe and effective. So again, we know there's not a ton of objectives here, but we wanted to reflect the priorities. And then moving on to the fourth goal, people and organizational health. This one is really critical, because if you don't have all of your internal infrastructure working as a county, it becomes really difficult to provide excellent community services. So within that, we wanted to look at employee engagement, the financial stability of the county. This is obviously very critical. If we can't fund what we're trying to do, everything else falls apart. Innovation and process improvement. How can we be becoming more efficient and effective in the work that is happening? And you have a really fantastic staff that is thinking about this all of the time. How do we get better at doing what we are doing? So we wanted to capture that, that streamlining of processes, making sure that we're responding to ideas to innovate, that type of thing can become first and foremost. And then lobbying and intergovernmental relationships as well. How are we keeping up those government-to-government partnerships with tribal partners, with other government leaders, and building on the work that's happening there? So within that, if you go to the next slide, I know I just shared a lot of information with you, but one of the things you'll notice that I didn't share was specific activities. And within a traditional strategic plan, usually what you'd see is, under every objective, there'd be a whole set of activities that would lay out, what are we going to do for the next three years to support this work? And one of the, I think, really great conversations that we were able to have with the management team was recognizing that right now, within your current operating environment, there are a lot of factors at play, and we need this plan to be adaptable. We need this plan to be flexible, as well as to provide a strong guiding framework for decision-making. And so out of that conversation, we came to the idea of basically setting up an annual process to select activities. And so you'd have your year-one activities that would go in with this initial strategic plan, but then on year-two, the cycle essentially would start with the management team, where every year, selecting, okay, we think these are the priorities that are going to be most important, the priority actions to support the objectives and goals in the strategic plan. Then they would bring those activities forward to the board for your consideration, at its approval, all of that. Then that would flow directly into your budgeting process, because we need to tie the activities to resource allocation. Once we have resources allocated to support those activities, then the management team implements those, reports back to you all, saying, this is what we were able to accomplish in the last year, and then the cycle begins again. We think that this type of a cycle will be most effective to making sure that that tool can really function for you in a useful way, in a realistic way, and in a way that is well-aligned with your actual budget process as well. We don't want to give you a wish list of items that is disconnected from the reality of your actual work. So that was the conclusion that the management team came to, and that certainly our team is fully in support of, because I do think it will make this a much more flexible and adaptable and realistic plan for you, while retaining a lot of the benefits of having that overarching structure of the plan itself. So with that, I do want to move actually two slides forward just to give you a sense of where we would be going next. So I'm sure there's questions about the framework that I just shared. Assuming that we get through a good conversation today, if you're in a place where you're ready to adopt those framework pieces, the next steps would be to have the county's management team work on performance indicators. How are we actually measuring success? And I think the example that we had earlier of the really fantastic Behavioral Deflection Program dashboard is a fantastic example of what really useful data can look like. And we wanted to take a little bit more time with the management team to, once again, once we have these approved, to make sure that there was a good set of strong data that they could be bringing back to this group on an annual basis. Those key performance indicators will be based on each goal. So we'll basically be selecting, what are the most critical points of data that we can be tracking to say, are we making progress toward this overarching goal that we have established? So that would be coming up, and then those year-one activities as well, so that we can have that be a full package. Then, once that comes back to you all for approval there, then that would be put into the full strategic plan, then that would be published as a full package in both English and Spanish. So I wanted to give you a preview of where we are headed next. But with that, I would love to open it up, see what questions might come up from the information I just shared, what discussion you might want to have today on those drafted elements.
To the board, just go informal, just cut any tongue you want.
I'll start. I really like the more streamlined version that we have. We have a lot in our previous version. And I think this one really, like, cuts to the chase, makes it easily readable, easily able to convey to staff and the community. So I want to thank you all very, very much for everybody that was involved. On the staff side, I know this is kind of a big lift each time we do it, but I just want to at least convey my appreciation and really like the direction we're going.
Great. Fisher Farh, hop in.
Thanks. I'm going to be a little bit more ethereal on this. Any rose, this is amazing. You know, I've been involved in strategic planning in this organization for a lot of years. Other organizations, including financial, business, and nonprofit, I've never seen such a complete package as the one that you've put forward. And I'm going to be a bit more specific. The, instead of a long list of physical activities that give us aspirational things that we'd like to do, it's going to be boiled down to, make sure the tool doesn't produce a list of aspirational activities that are separate from actual doable work. That's my paraphrasing of what you said. What we're going to do is look at it annually and tool the list of the things that we really are going to be able to address with the reality of the budget and the reality of the staff availability. It's remarkable. Very few people have ever made this kind of a presentation, and it really is well done. I hope we all take it directly to our heart, because I've never seen anybody quite like this. Thank you.
Yeah. You guys have done a great job of narrowing down a massive scope of work into something that is very digestible. And I like, you hear about a three-year plan, and it's like, well, how much is it going to change in three years? I mean, is this realistically a three-year plan? And you're looking at it, and I mean, it's probably a five-year plan, which is great. It's not, you know, so I like the timeline. I like looking out further and the simplicity of it. I do actually have one question, sir. The related county plans, what would be a way of prioritizing those in any sort of fashion?
Yeah, it's a great question. So what we've included for benefits of those here, there's a piece at the end of the plan that lists all of the other planning documents that the county has, because there's a really wide range of very tactical plans that you have, as well as some more strategic plans. And ideally, we want the strategic plan to serve as the umbrella function over these things and to help guide how work is prioritized, right? So within that, what we're imagining is that, on that annual basis, when your department directors are selecting priority actions, they're going to be going to those plans and pulling out, what are the most critical pieces from this that relate to the strategic plan priorities? And so they're going to be doing the work of going through all of those planning documents and being able to bring forward and say, from my area of expertise, this is what I think we need to focus on, or these are, you know, in the CIP, for example, or other things like that. These are the things that we have in progress, already happening to support these goals.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Great. Thank you for asking that question, because it was the perfect, like, on-ramp and sort of halfway answered the question I had, which was that inventory of the tactical plans, and that is the perfect word for a lot of our plans are not strategic plans, but they are planning documents, and they're sort of roadmaps. So my question was similar about where and how different program work plans fit in and relate to this, but I think that somewhat answers that question. And I appreciate that, because I think we've talked before about, in some programs or departments, the order of operations are not necessarily always aligned in timing with the strategic plan, because you have to do some work to create the conditions that make it even possible to work on a priority strategy. So like, that level of work that's humming along all the time, day to day, at the staff level, I like how you're describing how that's captured and supports the strategic plan and vice versa. I really especially like the annual retooling. I think that's really important, because by the time you get to year three, it is, it can be stale, or it's just, it's not a dynamic plan anymore, because it's not reflective of what happened in years one and two necessarily. And we are, we are so good, I think, as an organization, at being opportunistic and responsive, but also innovative. So I really, I especially appreciate that structure of saying, here's what this year, because we don't actually know what year two needs to look like until we get much of the way through year one and see what happened. So I am especially pleased overall, but that piece is really, it's great. Really functional.
Just in response to the related county plans, I just want to make sure our housing action plan is added to this list. Since we do have objectives specifically to housing.
Thank you. I scoured all of our plans, 10 years of board agendas, and our website.
There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot, and I missed that one, so I appreciate you sharing that one. It's an easy add.
Thank you. And Commissioner Senega, thank you for talking about the other plans, because you stated, this plan, the county's plan, is the umbrella over all the other plans, whether it be the community health plan, whatever. Coincidentally, the day after tomorrow, the Poverty and Homelessness Board is going to be finalizing our strategic plan. A lot of time's gone into this, and coincidentally also, it's very similar in fashion to what you described. I don't know if you had any input there. No, I know you didn't, because I was a part of that. But it will But it will be an umbrella underneath this entire plan, and everything in its plan, even though it is multi-jurisdictional, everything in its plan does pertain to our strategic plan the way you've outlined it. And that's really important, is that we don't have separate plans doing separate things, that everything does pertain directly to the strategic plan of the county as a whole. So, Commissioner Senega, thanks for bringing that up. We do have other strategic plans. We have the CHIP, for instance, the Community Health Improvement Plan. Well, that's got the umbrella underneath this also, and if it isn't, then if by design it isn't, it may not be because there are other agencies involved, a lot of other agencies involved in that, we need to make sure that our plan does cover it with our umbrella as well. And I think you've outlined a process for doing that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think within that process, when activities are brought on that annual basis, I think an ideal way to do that would also be to be able to say, here's the activity, and if it is supported in another plan, or if it's already called out in another plan, being able to fully tie that so that when you see that, you can also see, oh, here's where a lot of this work is coming from and potentially captured in more detail as well. So I think that having that annual process will ideally help you, again, envision and see the connection between these and these many, many other plans, the planning work that you have and what you're going to be focused on every year.
And not just those of us sitting in this room at a relatively high level, but the person their first day on the job, not that they would scrutinize a strategic plan to see where their job fits in, but if they were to, they could find that their job fits specifically into the strategic plan. Every element, every moment, every day is a part of the strategic plan. That way we're not wasting these valuable resources that we're designing the annual, the annual, what do we call it, the annual?
Priority activity.
Priority activity session, that it makes certain that the resources are available and that we're not, we're not striving outside of the confines that we have. So anyway, one more Bravo, thank you very much.
What's great about being last is you get to validate all of the other comments on All Grid. And I guess who gets the credit, Mas Adams or the new Baker Tilly group? I guess we have to figure that out, right?
Our management team and staff. That's really where that comes in.
No, I think, I think what I have really pulled out of this is that the pillars that we had that were working in the past came forward into this one in a simpler form. I think I can't imagine a more simple mission statement than three words, "We improve lives." I mean, every day you get up here, if you don't know what you're doing, if that's your heading for the day, you improve lives, everyone's going to be a participant in doing that. So I think that passion to serve and driven to connect and focus on solutions pillars that came forward from the last strategic plan really helps fortify and lift up that mission statement of "We improve lives." So it makes each individual accountable and not just a background person coming just for a job and employment, that everyone has a participatory part in the success of the organization. So, good job.
I'm anticipating too, and I'm curious, because you did some community focus groups, I think us having housing sort of right at the top and front and center and health is going to be, is going to really connect with the community. When the community that we're here to serve, that we do all this work for, looks at the top line of this, that's going to feel really meaningful. I like that we put that right in there.
Briefly, Chair, and I'll mention that the word "safety" is embedded in so many different places in this plan. There isn't, it's not called out very specifically as a safe place to be, but it's every place is woven through the entire plan. I scrutinized it for that. I thought, well, where's safety? Well, it's everywhere. Thanks.
I guess we're on, oh, wait, yeah, sorry.
If there's no further discussion, Chair, we did bring in order to adopt this strategic plan framework. We were waiting until after we got it to the board and they were official. We really like this, to do all the design elements and translation, so there is an order for this item to draft it, what we do if the board adopts it. We do all that work behind the scenes, bring the activities and key performance indicators back to you at a later time, but we'd be able to publish this on our website saying, hey, this is what we're moving forward with, and then continue those steps with the leadership team.
Well, awesome. I think you said an hour and 45 minutes, I figured you had more slides, I was going to let you keep talking, but you're ready for an order.
Well, we got, you know, the policy lab presentations, they were a little short, so this one, Chair, was a little.
So are we constructing a motion, just out of clarity, are we constructing a motion about framing that in an updated strategic plan or the dated strategic plan?
The 25 to 27 strategic plan. There is an order attached to the package, just adopting the plan.
Yeah, but it was there, I read two things on there that said, one said updated, one said strategic, so I was making clear. All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Chair, move approval of order 25062411 in the matter of adopting the 2025-2027 Lane County Strategic Plan.
Do I have a second?
A second?
We've got the A-team working today. We have a motion by Vice Chair and a second by Commissioner Buck to approve order 25062411 in the matter of adopting the 25-27 Lane County Strategic Plan as presented. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Very well, good job. Looking forward to the next set of slides.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Great job, everybody.
All right, it looks to me like we are in line to be done a little bit early unless anyone has anything to do with the order. If not, we will recess until 1:30 for our afternoon session. We are recessed.